Good evening, everyone. I'll call a meeting to order at this time. If you will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance, and I'll follow Mayor Pro Tim Scott. Please. And the invitation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, to do business with our great community that we live in, serving, Father. We're thankful for all the many blessings you give us and the holidays that's come upon us, Lord. Pray that you'll be with those that are less fortunate during this time, Lord. Those that are sick and injured, Lord, in the community, just keep and touch them and keep them close by your heart. All this we ask in Christ.
You have it.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. Have any changes to the agenda? There is one known change, and that is to remove public hearing ZA-18-01 from the agenda. The first public hearing. Any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under the Senate agenda on special event number two, we move that to number five, business item. I've just got a couple of questions that probably might have been a little mixed up, so just a couple of questions.
Other changes? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda's amendment.
Motion in second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here, gentlemen. We'll move on into our first item, which is public hearing S-18-01, Sam's Branch Development. The applicant is requesting a preliminary subdivision plat for East River, a proposed 298 to 315 lot residential planned unit development at 1899 Buffalo Road. Gentlemen, this is not a quasi judicial hearing, therefore there is no need for anyone to be sworn in in this matter. We'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So the applicant to Sam's Branch Development, as the mayor said, they're requesting preliminary subdivision for the East River. As you remember, that's a 298 to 315 unit development. They kind of reserve the right to switch out some single-family lots in the future to like row house, townhouse type development, be single-family townhouse, on a planned unit development with almost 68 acres of land, located up here, very close to the Shrek and Booker Dairy Road. There's the parcel. So just to refresh your memories, the parcel is divided by Buffalo Road. There's a low area here, an existing wetland, another existing wetland in this area. There's a Blue Line stream down in this lower corner, and you can see the woodland areas. There's a residential home here and here, also a gas easement running along this edge of the property. Both the Blue Line stream and the river are required to have a buffer, and as a PUD, the buffer doubles to 100 feet from 50 feet. This is also within the watershed overlay district, which has a separate set of regulations to protect the watershed area, mostly pertaining to more enhanced stormwater management. So the impacts, there's likely to be additional students. This development will provide fee-in lieu of parkland with the final plat. There will be town customers for utilities, sewer and water and electricity with annexation, and annexation will happen before final plat. Just another detail of this plan. I think I pretty much described everything on this map. The dark dashed lines represent the buffer, the buffer from the river and the Blue Line The adjacent properties to the north is agriculture, residential, mostly vacant farm field. To the south is mostly the same, with the credit union located in this corner. We have some R10 residential, single-family zoning to the east, and to the west you have the river, and then more low-density residential. So this is the approved master plan. If you remember, this was with the rezoning, it was rezoned with an approved master plan, and that plan had seven conditions. So the first condition was that a traffic impact study be conducted, and that was done. Voluntary annexation prior to connection to the town sewer and water and electricity, that will be done before final plat. They will get a right-of-way permit before accessing Buffalo Road, and that's been applied for. That's all that paperwork's done. The council added a condition that there'd be no single-family units in the first and second phases of the development, and there are none proposed with the first phase, which we're actually under review right now. There are no areas for park dedication, so they've complied with number five. And to be done, all the changes incorporated into the PUD master plan re-submitted with final plat. So right now, there really are no required changes. They're basically complying with the original master plan. So six is essentially met, and there's been nothing so far that's going to require this whole process to come back, preliminary plat to come back to you guys. What they're proposing is consistent with the master plan, and then at final plat, it should be consistent with the preliminary plat. So this is the proposed preliminary plat. It looks much like what you'd seen before. You can notice down in this corner, the trail used to wrap around the cul-de-sac with the master plan. It now goes through the cul-de-sac. There used to be a trail running down this edge, and because of the easement, they found out they cannot construct a trail, linear trail, running the length of that easement. They could only cross it. So it's been deleted from the plans, and I believe there was a trail on this side too, and that's been removed. The trails that have been removed were private trails, trails for the residential neighborhood, not public trails. The trails shown in green on this map are proposed as public trails, future public trails. And I want to point out that the mountains-to-sea Greenway master plan shows alignment for the trail to be along Buffalo Road or along the river, and it could be a combination of both. It was identified that way in order to make the connection, however we can find, find a connection. So this plan actually envisions either or. So they've kind of addressed it by building both, or proposing an easement in one and building the other. So as I mentioned already, the trail on the northern and southern boundaries have been eliminated due to the gas restrictions on the north on that side. The Greenway trail goes through the cul-de-sac. I already mentioned that. Greenway trail is closer to homes than shown on the master plan. I can go back to that. This trail used to have a little more space between the backs of the homes and where it's shown now. I think as they zeroed in on grading, they had to snug it up to the homes. Street trees are no longer proposed. We had an issue where our standards don't allow for street trees, you know, in the right-of-way, and the reason being, we don't have staff to maintain them, we don't have an arborist, we have a hard time managing the trees we have already, and also it's dedicated for utilities and that sort of thing. So at this point, the developer just removed them from the plans. Trails along Buffalo Road now extend to the borders of the development, which was a condition of approval. We wanted them to, from the north to the south, have the trails extend all the way. They were foreshortened in the previous version. Yeah, the islands, there used to be islands in the cul-de-sacs. Those islands are no longer there. So these used to be landscape islands in the cul-de-sacs. So as I mentioned earlier, there will be up to 280 single-family homes, of which 76 of them may become attached unit triplexes, and that'll be determined based on market conditions as they build out each phase, if you recall. Thirty-five of the townhouse units are on the east side of Buffalo Road up on the northeast Only detached single-family units with the townhome units, sorry, Phase 1 and 2 cannot have the townhouse units. That's what I was trying to say there. The stated market price, I believe during the master plan process, was somewhere between 150,000 to 200,000 per lot. Single-family detached examples are here in a typical single-family layout, lot layout, showing a five-foot side yard setback on both sides, 18 feet from the street, from the street right-of-way, sorry, and 12-foot rear setback. And that was approved through the PUD process, those setbacks. This is the triplex that could be replacing the single-family homes in future phases. But right now, these aren't proposed, and they're not shown on any of the preliminary plat drawings, but it's, in a sense, reserved if, because of market forces, townhouse products become desirable, these may be swapped in. And this is the row house product, kind of up in the northeast corner, very much like it was envisioned during the master plan process. So just want to briefly say, the environmental concerns, there's blue line streams requiring buffering. The watershed overlay bumped that buffer up in a PUD from 50 to 100 feet, and they've shown that. And the proposed Greenway trail does cross the Blue Line stream in the corner by the cul-de-sac over here, not shown to be built. The trails are not being built. There's just an easement is there, so that should the Greenway come along that alignment along the river, the city will later be able to build a trail. The easement's there waiting for it, and it will be graded to accommodate a trail, but no trail's being built at this time, or with any of the phases as proposed. And this just shows too, on the north side, they're not building across this easement because they would require additional permits to do so. And since we didn't require, or we haven't required crossing of the trail here, you know, building it out to the edge-to-edge, this section also is not being built. It'll just be, I'll show you in a minute. The overlay district requires enhanced stormwater management. They're dealing with that. Cluster regulations, this is just a review of some of the approval. Cluster regulations, lot sizes can't be less than 4,800 square feet, 60% of 8,000 the underlying lot size for that district. Lot of the lots are under 4,800 square feet, which was a part of the master plan approval. So these were things that were codified through the PUD process with that master plan. So these are approved deviations from the underlying code. Minimum lot width and lot frontages have changed. Do you understand?
I don't know. Yeah.
Okay. What I'm saying is, this used to be an RA district, and when they rezoned it to PUD, these are the changes, and we approved these changes with the PUD master plan. The plan showed these, you know, lesser setbacks, smaller lot sizes, and I'm just going through that, that these were approved through the PUD process. So as long as they're consistent with that original master plan, it was essentially codified in, with a map. Side yard setbacks are reduced, separation between buildings has been reduced. They are going to be required to dedicate some additional land for the Buffalo Road. The DOT has reviewed the plans. They are actually, DOT is actually going to be building the road and the accessways, the driveways into this development through that road project. So we don't actually have a detail of what that's going to look like, because it's going to be built by DOT. They're going to permit it and build it, the road section and the entrances. So that means turn lanes, they'll be, however DOT feels fit to build those. So they are proposing 50-foot and 60-foot wide public right-of-way. Again, it's public right-of-way in this development. The outer loop around the development is 60-foot. The inner streets and cul-de-sacs are 50 feet. They are proposing a pavement width being 24-foot wide with mountable valley curb. Typically, our curb standard is a B612. It's the stepped-up curb. This was in the master plan. Two cul-de-sacs are identified, one in the first phase and one in the sixth phase. The eastern subdivision has a looped road with a large green space in the center, so that'll be in the right-of-way, but it'll be maintained by the HOA. So sidewalks are shown on both sides of each street. Our normal subdivision standards require one side, so they're going above and beyond, which was actually suggested by the PUD process. Sidewalks are required along Buffalo Road on both sides of the frontage, although the developers proposing a 10-foot trail rather than the sidewalk that weaves in and out of the right-of-way. So wherever it's out of the right-of-way, there will be a public access easement, and that will be needed when it's in the right-of-way. Staff felt this was appropriate since the Buffalo Road or the riverside could become the future alignment to the Greenway trail. We don't know, so. And there's a center trail running through this development, which will provide access from the river to the street should it switch somewhere from river to street. So it really accommodates the future options for the Greenway quite well. Sidewalk crosswalks are shown as being striped for pedestrian safety throughout the development. So for trails, the proposed public and private trails, as I said, the green trails were public, the bluish trails were private, so the private trails just being HOA-only. As I mentioned, there's two options for the mountains-to-sea, shown by the orange arrows, and that center spine here would connect the road section from the river section. So we did have a concern about this cul-de-sac as it's being proposed. Public Utilities was not too happy with having the access to the pump station being shared with a future Greenway. The planning board felt as though that trail, you know, a future Greenway trail shouldn't run through a cul-de-sac, period. So there's been a condition of approval added to address that. As I said earlier, the trail stops short of the property lines. There's just an easement getting it from this location to the edge, and then on the other side, did I have a good drawing of that? I don't. The current, this is an older image I stuck in here. The trail from this point north is also not being built, because it doesn't go anywhere, just like in the south, it doesn't go anywhere. So that would be built by the town at some date, once we determine the Greenway was going to take on that corridor, we would build that section out. The site will be ready to receive it. In the meantime, the trails along Buffalo Road will have been constructed and will serve as the primary Greenway trail until we can get other connections. So as I said, there's no parkland dedication with the preliminary plat or the final plat. There'll just be a fee-in lieu. Public access seasons will be over all the trails. The fee-in lieu is based on 1/57th of an acre, based on the value of the lots, and that'll be required prior to recording the final plat. PUD narrative talked about pocket parks. They've not really shown any details. The long linear green spaces in the center of the development are those pocket parks, and they talked about landscaping, soccer, football, cornhole, horseshoes, fire pits, and those sort of things in that area, which are not detailed out. Those would be private amenities. They're not open to the public. They don't get park dedication for it, so it's a HOA amenity for them to build out and the HOA to maintain. So with annexation, we'll get town water, sewer, and electrical service. Phases 1, 2, 7, 8, and 9 are serviceable by gravity sewer. Actually, we think that, sorry, wrong thought here. Yeah, the pump station has to be built to town standards, and, yeah, as I said, the access to the pump station is currently shown as shared with the trail, which is not desirable from a staff perspective, and the planning board is not in favor of it. The stormwater management, because it's a high-density option in the watershed district, they need to meet a higher level of stormwater, removing solids and nitrogen from the stormwater. Our town engineer has reviewed the stormwater management plan and believes it's compliant. The existing pond near the Neuse River is going to be the stormwater management feature. That'll be built out probably in Phase 3. That's what it looks like right now, based on the calculations. At that point, there'll be enough impervious built that that pond modification will be required to accept stormwater. And a pond maintenance operations agreement will be required with the first phase for the pond. So a reminder, there are no landscape standards with our, in our subdivision code for residential development. No landscaping is required. The master plan did indicate that there'd be a Type A buffer around the periphery of the property. The developer has shown some landscaping, but the drawing we have now shows street trees, and they've talked about removing those. So revised landscape plan is still going to be required. And again, street trees are not allowed in the PSNC gas line easement along the north edge of the development where they had originally proposed landscaping. So there was a conflict there with the master plan. So parking, single-family residential development requires two parking stalls per unit, which can easily be accommodated with the garages and driveways. The developer said today that actually they're going to have two spots in the driveway and one in the garage. Multifamily requires one and a half spaces per one-bedroom unit, 1.75 for two, or two spaces for three or more bedroom units. And we don't know what bedroom unit configuration they're going to have on those townhouses in the northeast corner, so parking will be kind of addressed through the special use permit process at the time that portion of the development comes forward, because multifamily residential is a special use. Throughout the development, we have 50-foot and 60-foot wide streets, and here's an example. If you have cars parked on 50-foot wide street, on both sides of the street, let's say it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, we could have a parking issue or an emergency service issue. I'm just raising this. They're meeting all the standards in our subdivision code. They've provided all the parking required by our subdivision code, yet the fire department does have some concerns, you know, should this get so congested that they're going to have issues servicing. I'm raising this issue because there may be a need someday for one side of street parking. Just wanted to raise that issue. Planning board was concerned, they thought there should be some overflow parking with each phase of the development. And there is a condition of approval in the conditions, but I want the council to consider that and decide, you know, is that a valid concern? How should we address it? Should we just address it in the future if congestion does get to be a problem? Or should there indeed be some kind of overflow parking, which is not required in the code? So it's not in the plans, it's not conceived of, but the planning board was concerned. So the developer's planning nine phases, roughly 40 units per phase, depending on market conditions, and the phasing plan was shown. Here it is. There will be an HOA, which will maintain the maintenance of the yards and open space amenities, and also the trail corridors. There will be a need to submit deed restrictions and covenants to be reviewed by the town attorney. The open space, because of the watershed district and the clustering provisions, is required to have a deed restriction over it. Right now, they're proposing subdivision signs at all three entrances to the subdivision. They'll have to pull a separate permit for that, and it'll be reviewed at the time the permit's applied for. So again, the planning board was concerned with a lack of overflow parking and congestion. They were concerned about the Greenway running through the cul-de-sac and felt like if there's a Greenway, it should go around the cul-de-sac. So the planning board recommended approval with 11 conditions of approval, two of which address the above concerns. So the recommendations are in your staff report, but if you want, I can read them or I can not read them. Staff and the planning board request the council review the plat, make a recommendation whether to approve or deny with appropriate conditions of approval. Any questions?
Questions for Stephen?
I just have one, Stephen. Under the recommendation, under item number 10, the developer will work with staff to incorporate overflow parking areas into each phase of development. Does that mean we will have overflow parking?
Does that mean?
What? We will have overflow parking in each phase of development? Or what does?
Well, this is a condition that the planning board requested, basically to address their concern that once the development is congested with, you know, guest parking and family parking, that by having overflow parking, that'll take care of that problem. There is no overflow parking on the final plans right now, on the final plans. To do so, you'd have to probably lose a few lots.
But the recommendation says developer will work with staff. Does that mean it will happen, or it will not, or somewhere in between?
Probably somewhere in between, because I don't know how you can work it in without losing lots. So that's really why I raised your attention. How do you want staff to deal with that? Is that a valid concern? Is that a concern that we address in the future if it indeed does become congested and possibly limit parking to one side of street in the future? Or should we address it now with some kind of overflow parking? Is it a real concern? Is it a concern shared by the council?
I just wanted to make sure that there was no misunderstanding as to what number 10 required or didn't require. It sounds like we don't really know. We sort of figure it out as we go.
That's kind of how it's written.
That means it's going to be none?
Unless the council feels it's an issue, then we can reword this condition.
I think it's a real concern because vehicles through there, getting access to it, other than wait until later. to, other than wait until later. I think one side of the street parking, parking area, something that might be.
To do that, you would have to submit a separate ordinance. The council would have to submit an ordinance once the street's, you know, dedicated and approved, submit an ordinance that limits parking to one side.
Is your mailbox is going to be?
The, there's a, in the UDO, there's actually a requirement that says, dealing with UDO's PDU streets, says the streets should be designed to only be as wide as needed to accommodate the usual vehicular mix for that street while providing adequate access for moving vans, garbage trucks, fire engines, and school buses. What you showed us was not adequate moving. There's a potential for that. There's no adequate, you couldn't, you couldn't even get a school bus through there if people parked in there, or garbage trucks to pick up the garbage. So the, the point is they, they have to take that into consideration as part of our UDO. Or we have to, or we have to give them a variance from it. I mean.
Well, it's, it's complicated, because on the other hand, our standard says you can do 50-foot right-of-way and 24-foot wide streets. So in a sense, it's a conflict in the code or?
But, but I agree, you can have a 50-foot street as long as you don't have parking on it. I mean, you understand? You can have a 50-foot street as long as you provide adequate, you have to provide adequate, it says here, and it's absolutely right. It's 10.10, 10.10, 10.19, 10.2. It says streets should be designed, it says, it says mixed street while providing adequate access for moving vans, garbage trucks, fire engines, and school buses. So they have to show us how they're going to address that in those situations where you have, when you're allowing people to park on both sides of the street, we're not going to be providing adequate, they cannot ensure us adequate access for moving vans, garbage trucks, fire engines, and school buses. Without having any parking on the street, if they say no parking, then they show us exactly. They say no parking, but on one side of the street, is it enough room for the fire engines to get there? Is the fire engine the biggest of the vehicles we got? Or is it a garbage truck? Okay, they, they have to be able to go down the street. So I mean, whatever, and they can't, those things, now, I, I mean, I know John's people are good, but I don't think they got the ones that can turn in the middle. We didn't order those.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's this distinction here. I mean, it's, should, should the plan be amended to accommodate parking? They've got more than enough parking per code right now. Even if they did overflow parking, you could still get people parking on two sides of the street and still have congestion, because people didn't always park where you want them to park. So the question is then, is this an issue we're going to deal with parking restrictions in the future? Or are we going to do something to the plan to make it so that, no matter what, a fire truck can go through there? I mean, how wide a street is that? If you've got car on each side and you want a fire truck to go to the middle?
So my, my question is, streets, stated, the streets, with the streets meet?
They do.
Streets be dedicated publicly?
They will.
So once they become public, Elfer's responsibility or the town's responsibility to be sure parking on one side of the road?
At that point, it's the town's.
So even with overflow parking, without the town restricting parking, you can still have people parking on both sides of the road?
That is correct.
And they've already met the requirements plus one for lots.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure you understand, that very valid point, very valid point, but we need to understand that that may be Elfer's responsibility.
Is that a fair statement, Mr. Smith? I'm, I'm asking, that true, or is that something we can do as far as restricting parking?
I think you can do now. I'd be curious to see what the developer suggests.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to get in here.
Yeah.
I just want to say that. These parking things have been a problem in Clayton at times.
Yeah, in Clayton, they only had two stalls, two parking spots per home. So the developer learned from that, and he added a third per home. So it's better than the Clayton scenario, but it still does, if you've got cars on two sides of the street, it still may be an issue in the future. And the issue is you're going to have people there who all of a sudden can't park in front of their house. That's, that's the issue you, you guys are going to have to deal with at the time you're thinking about an ordinance so that the fire truck can go through. I just wanted to raise that issue so that you guys understood it, and it wasn't a concern of the planning board.
Okay, you also can add in requirements under HOV, uh, HOV?
HOA.
HOA, sorry. That's a different thing, isn't it? It's a different thing.
Wrong me.
Wrong me. You can't add restrictions in there, because I know people that have strong HOAs, and they, they're pretty, they're pretty much on top of things. So I mean, if they put in some type of restriction in their HOV requirements, as it's got to be read and approved by the town attorney, because I saw that was in there, that's one of the things requirement, is that when they do that, it has to go through our town attorney also, correct?
Yes, unless it's something directed by the council, I don't think that's something that would be required of their HOA agreement. I do know the house that I'm currently looking at purchasing, not in this town, they had guests can park during the daytime on the street, but at night, no parking on the street in the HOA agreement, and you have to park in the garage. So there are, you know, driveway or garage. HOAs do address that. It's a neighbor-to-neighbor enforcement or HOA enforcement issue. Then again, you've got Christmas and Thanksgiving where you have a lot of guests, so it's a partial fix.
I'm just saying, when, as, when they do that, they need to make sure that we've put something, that they are trying to at least consider addressing something about potential parking and through the, they police themselves. We don't have to send somebody out there and do ordinance on them, I mean.
But without, without a council direction, that's not something staff would be looking for in an HOA agreement, unless it's something that is mandated to be in there. Whereas the deed restriction on the open space is something that's required by code, you know, maintenance of the storm ponds required, that's got to be in the HOA. There are things that we need to see there in the HOA agreement, something related to parking is not typically. So unless the council said there should be some kind of HOA restriction on parking to address this situation, I'm not going to require it.
Is any of this open space with pervious tile available for parking?
You mean, parking in the open space with some kind of a?
Pervious tile.
Grass pavement? Reinforced turf?
Yeah, or some reinforced turfs and concrete blocks that got big holes in them.
That can happen. The question is, this is very tight development. There's really no open space to do that in.
You also had, you had a statement in here on page 14 of your report, and said, and I don't see it, you still, you talked about stormwater, but you said the staff does not agree that the existing ponds, it's on page 14, the million of stormwater, staff, staff does not agree that the existing ponds can be used at a phase one and phase two development stage without improvements unless they actually record a property each phase. How are you addressing that? Maybe I missed that. How are you, because I didn't see that as a rule of the requirements that you listed.
Right. Sorry, that's, that, I shouldn't have, I should have changed that. The town engineer and their engineer have kind of worked things out, and they now are compliant with that. At first, what they had proposed, it was not working. Since this was all prepared, they've, they've reached an agreement.
Okay.
That's why I said, they will be building the pond, they will be modifying the pond in the third phase to address those concerns.
What is the fee amount for the, the, in lieu of, in the parks?
It's not determined yet, but it's based on a formula that's in our code.
Okay, formula being?
1/57th, 1/57th of the lot value.
Okay, lot value.
Times the number of lots. Essentially, that's the standard.
Okay. And then the last concern I have is related to sidewalks. I know they're planning to put a walking trail or something in front of the, on Buffalo Road.
Correct.
My concern is that we have spent a lot of money in our town on putting sidewalks where there's no businesses. Kelly Drive is an example, because we have a standard that says we have sidewalks on our streets. And not walking trails, because they're a lot cheaper to put a walking trail than to put sidewalks. It just is. I mean, costs a lot more money. I know, because we put some in another part of town not too long ago, and our little part costs a lot of money. But I understand it costs more money to put sidewalks. But it comes down to consistency, especially on thoroughfares where you're coming into town. And so that's why the, that's why the UDO also addresses sidewalks. And on thoroughfares, it will be a sidewalk on thoroughfares. That's what it says. Now, if we're not going to do it, then I, I, you know, I'm kind of similar here. I'm, I'm going to get on, I'm going to get on Emory's bandwagon, because Emory says this all the time, we set policies and set rules, and then we violate them left and right. You know, either we change the UDO, we do something else, because it's convenient for us. Either we're going to have sidewalks or not going to have sidewalks. You understand? If it doesn't matter about sidewalks, then let's stop forcing everybody else to have sidewalks, or let's stick to our guns. Our UDO says that we will have sidewalks on thoroughfares. I mean, that's what it says. So if we're not going to do it, then, okay, then I just say, then how's that for anybody else that wants to put in a lot? If we do it one time, why don't we do it again? Because we, they could put, it's cheaper to put in asphalt than this concrete.
I have two, two responses, just to clarify. The original master plan that was approved through the rezoning did address this issue and did propose trails, and the council approved it. At that point, staff continued along, and also, this being the alternative greenway route was part of that thinking, is that a wider trail is a better, better than a five-foot sidewalk. So 10-foot trail is better than a five-foot sidewalk if it does become future trail. I understand the consistency up and down the corridor. We may be able to address that in the future, given this is the greenway corridor. And lastly, Buffalo Road, as, right now, is not proposed to have any trail with the new improvements. DOT is not, does not have that in their budget at all. So right now, there will be no sidewalk at all on that corridor unless development builds it. And at that point, we can say we prefer a trail over a sidewalk because it is a greenway corridor. Now, that would be on one side of the street, not both, so I think, you know, as a compromise, if agreeable to the developer, I think maybe one side of the street could be sidewalk, the other side trail, unless the council feels strongly that it should be sidewalk or trail on both sides. Just want to give you some idea of the thinking.
I guess the question is, though, so when our UDO says that we require it and we don't require it, I mean, I just have, so what's good is the UDO, we can just bypass what we want to?
The PUD process is a negotiated process, so certain regulations and standards can be changed through the PUD process. So it is kind of a negotiated zoning district and a negotiated site plan. So in this case, we, as, as, as an approved plan, approved a trail in lieu of a sidewalk on both sides of the right-of-way, and that was codified when they approved that master plan. I didn't hear any feedback at that point, so staff has continued along in that process.
I guess I didn't, I didn't notice it at the time. So, because I wouldn't have been in favor of that, so.
But it is.
There's all this big stuff. It's kind of difficult to see every, what every dot and every line means.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because there's lots of dots and lines from, from, you know, that, it just looked like to me that there was a sidewalk. I didn't recognize that was a trail, so, until I started reading it and saw it was a trail, but I just, I'm just expressing my concerns that, because, because we require these businesses that are by themselves away from everybody to put in a sidewalk.
Right.
That goes nowhere.
That's right. This will go nowhere too for a long time.
Well, not if we put in a trail, right? Then it goes.
No, it'll still go nowhere. There's no trail on either end.
But the trail will connect to the rest of the subdivision.
Someday, someday.
Because there's subdivision, right?
If a subdivision to the south builds, we'll get that connection. If a subdivision to the north builds, we'll get it then. Until then, this is it for the trail. Eventually, it'll become connected, unless, unless, well.
But what you mean is it's connected within?
Within subdivision, yes. But there's still dead-end sections.
Well, that's the only way to do it. I mean, really what we're doing here is, we, our job is to look forward for the next 40, 50 years, how this is going to pan out, make sure it's a good plan that will mesh with future growth and activity. And hence, that's my concern with the parking, but I know we're going to hear from the developer. But what I don't want to hear, I won't be up here five years from now, I don't want to hear about a parking problem, but I don't want somebody standing where you're standing saying, well, council approved it. But that's why the parking needs to be addressed, in my opinion, a little bit more so now, so if the town can regulate parking after the streets are dedicated, then not a problem.
I have a question.
I have one other question, Mayor. The initial plan had the B612 curb, and they changed it to a valley curb. Just to give you a little.
No, the original master plan did show a valley curb. Our code requires a B612, and.
That's more convenient for them to build driveways on.
Well, yeah, it doesn't require removal of curb and installing of, you know, a new curb cut for each driveway. This way, you can put a driveway anywhere and not have to disturb that concrete. It's just a different look.
I think our first topic would probably be a parking.
Good evening. Reed Smith. So first, our proposal or plan does not show any on-street parking. We, we don't plan on any on-street parking. I feel like this is a very exaggerated illustration of parking. We, and this is not a new issue. We discussed this when we brought this plan before you many months ago, when we got our putt approval. So we, we had the discussion then, and, and we can have it again. But now, we're really, should be down to code, and whether we are meeting code or not with what we brought before you when we brought the putt. I believe, as the mayor's pointed out, our streets are built per code. I would like to point out that from a parking standpoint, we are actually exceeding code. Code on these, these lots would be two, one in the garage, one on the pad, and we've actually got a 50% overage or overflow, if you will, of parking for this neighborhood. So I believe we have gone above and beyond addressing the parking issue by allowing 50% overflow over what code requires for parking. In addition, we will have HOA language, as we do in all of our neighborhoods of, of parking on the street. We'll be glad to, but the attorney, I think we've, we've submitted sample covenants, so be glad to review those with the attorney. But we, we, we believe, as this plan is before you, it is, the code is met, exceeded, and is acceptable for approval. Own, do you want me to stop there, Mayor, or do you want me to address anything else?
Well, I just had a question. You, you mentioned you have language already in your HOA agreements about parking on the streets. What type of language, I guess?
So it's very similar to what was described earlier. They allow on-street during the day, like if somebody's dropping something off or whatever, does not allow any overflow at the night, and everybody's got parking in their garage. So if somebody's got a bunch of junk in their garage and they're using it to storage and parking on the street, they're going to get $50 fines a day until they get off the street.
No, my neighborhood has the same restriction of parking.
I, I just will point out that, that, I mean, as a stopgap, the town for sure has the right to regulate parking once the public, the streets are public, so, and that, as a stopgap, I mean, that, that is for sure your right.
There's really not enough room for parking on the street, is there? I mean, temporary, but it's 24-foot street.
Yeah, this is, this is not a great illustration. I mean, we have the same street section in, in our community park view, which we did learn, because we only had one pad on the, in front, and you couldn't park two cars there, and trash trucks get through there every day. You know, I mean, it's, it's not an issue. People don't park on the street like this every day. Do you get one or two? Yeah, you know, but it's not, it's not, it's not illustrated like this.
This is the worst case.
The other cool thing is, you've got more than one way to get to each car. It's not a dead end, so.
If we were proposing the one-car pad tonight, with what we had learned in Clayton, I would have the same concerns, and I would not have much to talk about, because we, we would still be meeting code, but I think you would have a better argument on, on an issue, and that's why we have exceeded code with parking with a two-car pad.
But what's the, like, the driveways approximately? I can't. Eight or nine?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Reed, your plan does not envision or provide for any on-street parking. That was something our planning director brought up in case of guests or people having parties or.
Yeah, clearly, I mean, you're gonna have cases where somebody's dropping off a kid or something and they're gonna scoot up and then leave, but, um, I mean, we, th- this is not the intent of the neighborhood, as, as shown. I mean, all these cars will be in the other driveways.
There's no, there's, you don't envision any occupants parking on the street.
No, sir.
So, the other, I mean, the other area that we discussed was the sidewalks.
Yeah, so.
Um, as opposed to the trailway in front of the subdivision.
Well, just so y'all know, we, we are indifferent. Um, and even though we've been through the putt process, if you would like for us to replace the greenway with a five-foot sidewalk, we're indifferent, um, and amenable if that's what the council wishes.
One question for you, Reed. Number eleven talks about the greenway cul-de-sac. Wonder what's the reason for going through the cul-de-sac bushes around?
I'm introduced, Donnie Adams, our engineer. He's gonna take that one for me.
Quick answer, Donnie Adams, added in the Hodge Engineering, professional engineer of State North Carolina. Quick answer to that is, we, we heard the condition by the planning staff, planning board, and we have no issue with that. We'll, um, we still will bring our, our trail into the cul-de-sac, but we'll be providing the easement around it so that it'll, it can continue without having to, to go across the cul-de-sac. Non-issue.
Anyone else in the audience?
My name is Ken Langston. I live at two-two-five-five Buffalo Road, just north of the plant subdivision. And I guess my question is for Reed. Reed, what kind of ownership, homeownership do you see in this, this project?
I'd say like, hopefully a hundred percent.
So, um, theoretically, every dwelling unit in this project could be a rental unit. Well, if they're all rental units, then HOA doesn't mean a thing. There are no homeowners, right?
It's a class A unit, they're, they're really the same thing. Sure, plus this is a make this free community. And this is all been addressed at the, at the neighborhood table.
Okay, that's fine. Well, living north of there, uh, I happen to be a Town of Smithfield water consumer. And, um, with this project, I'd like to have some response as to how the Town of Smithfield's gonna improve the water flow to us as this project takes on more water out of the twelve minute pipe. And the fact that we suffer from, uh, low and inconsistent water pressure at this time and have for about, uh, two and a half years.
Ted, can you address exactly, um, how this was looked at so that we can, I guess, get some comfort level as to how, you know, the subdivision will be accommodated by what's there and what improvements are gonna take place?
Yeah, the wa- the water pressure along Buffalo Road, uh, until right now, unaware there was a low-pressure issue, I can certainly look into that. Uh, but the supply of water, that was part of the Booker-Derry Road upgrade. That Booker-Derry Road line went from a twelve to a sixteen. And of course, as you know, where the, uh, location of the project's right there at the CQ. So, from the CQ up the road, a couple hundred feet or whatever, to this subdivision, there still is a twelve, but the supply is not an issue. As far as pressure, though, I'll have to look into that. I'm not prepared to say one way or the other, cause I was unaware there was even an issue. According to our tests, there, there aren't, but I, I'm not gonna dispute a resident. If he says there is, there is, so we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing, second.
Second, on the favor. Recommendations up?
I move, we approve the request with recommendations one through eleven, second.
Motion, second to approve with the planning board's recommendation items one through eleven. Thank you. Sounds to me like we approved it with the trail. But that was what was in there. That was what was in the recommendations, the trail.
And I just think that for, for us as a council, the adjoining neighbors, if they come, we just need to do something consistent that ties in. I mean, that, that's the solution.
Yeah.
Can I ask a point of clarification? You guys, we need to do that. Sorry.
Absolutely.
Point of clarification, the council just approved, uh, condition number ten. So, am I to interpret that as the, the, if we can squeeze some parking in, we add it? If we don't, we don't? I guess I didn't, I didn't get a strong sense of where we're going with, with condition number ten. I was gonna ask the question before you made your motion, but it happened so quick.
I think that was a question I asked earlier.
Yeah.
I think that was.
So I'll give you back the same answer?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, this time we will move on to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak here in citizens' comments? We'll come forward at this time. While you're coming forward, I do want to recognize our, I believe I saw our newest county commissioner from the Town of Smithfield walk into the chambers. Welcome, sir. Thank you for coming this evening.
I'm gonna forgive my time on an hour Christmas parade.
Well, we, we appreciate you coming this evening. Would you like to say anything? You go, go right ahead real quick if you would like.
Just briefly, I just want you to know that I'm, I really am committed to helping the citizens of this county in Smithfield as close to my heart. I live in Smithfield, I work in Smithfield, I'm a business in Smithfield, and I want to see us all doing hands, doing hands, and Mr. Rowe and Boss were a duty life things for county and the town, citizens. I'm honored to be, uh, selected to represent you as the board commissioner. I have the benefit of any time. I promise you, I've got the same cell phone number I've had all along. If you don't have.
Which I, which I need. I lost all my contacts, so, okay, all right.
You need to give it to Ms. Emma Gimmel. Ms. Sue Avery.
Thank you for coming this evening. Ms. Gimmel, how are you this evening?
My question is, when you, um, deleted the public hearing for number one, I would like to know when you're gonna bring that back up?
Um, it, it was taken off the agenda primarily for a legal question from the town attorney, so I, I can't answer how long it will take him to evaluate that.
Can you let me know when it will be replaced?
We can certainly send you a copy of the agenda as soon as it gets on there.
Okay.
Probably on there next month.
Anyone else? Questions, speaking here in citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that I amended earlier.
Move, mayor.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, all in favor? We'll move on to business items now. First item is S dash eighteen zero two, Last Investment LLC.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council. So this item was tabled at the November sixth meeting to allow the developer time to negotiate a buffer along the northwest property line to potentially include existing vegetation and a fence. Other unresolved issues at that time included verifying septic systems for lots, um, which will happen in the future, and then providing a cemetery access. At the time, there was a dispute about whether that current, currently shown access, it wasn't recorded, so it wasn't necessarily a legal access. And so, cemeteries need a legal access. There's a condition of approval to that effect. The meeting was not to address these latter two issues, but I just wanted to raise that as they were the unresolved issues in this plat. So, that meeting was held last week and no specific agreement was decided upon. The developer had a willingness to consider something in the future, his main point, and he's here tonight, he can talk, speak to it. He has no interest in removing any trees beyond what is required to construct a home and install a septic system. He can't, he felt he couldn't guarantee no trees would be removed along that area in the event that that's the only septic site. In that event, trees would come down. That was really the basic outcome of that meeting. Uh, no, no formal agreement.
One thing we talked last time, Stephen, was about eliminating the stub-out road and in lieu thereof, making an access to the cemetery. Was that discussed?
Yes, it was briefly discussed. Uh, the developer, I mean, has gone back and forth about how he's gonna address the condition of approval. That road is, as per your discussion, I believe, will be gone from the plan. Um, exactly where that access, um, is still undetermined. Last I heard it, it might be in the same location where it's shown, although not on the averp side of the line, but just all on the developer's side of the line. So maintaining a direct act, access from Swift Creek down to the cemetery.
Emory, it's my understanding they were gonna do an eighteen-foot strip off the property line, straight to the cemetery, and if.
Straight off Cleveland Road?
Yes, sir.
So the, putting it along lot fourteen or perhaps thirteen was, I have a question?
You'd be going through the cul-de-sac?
No, not the cul-de-sac, but going directly to the cemetery.
Goes directly to the cemetery from the street, right along the property line.
Okay, but that.
This is the location that it was shown and I think is what they're preferring at this moment. On the backside of those lots. The developer's here, he can speak to it. I mean, we've seen no plans. This was just kinda discussed with Bob today.
One thing we talked about, if we're eliminating a sixty-foot right-of-way for a stub-out road, I was sorta looking at that as a quid pro quo for maybe putting in a twenty or thirty foot access directly to the cemetery somewhere in the neighborhood of lot thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen. And it's a net gain for the developer. May not work in terms of layout, but in theory, it's a net gain of usable acreage. Is that?
I would make that a condition of approval if that's what the council wishes.
It, it seemed acceptable at the last meeting. Guess I'm not hearing that this meeting.
Oh.
I guess it was a surveyor, amenable. I'm not saying he didn't agree to it, but.
At this time, all that would be in here, if it approves item number seven, would be a right-of-way access. It wouldn't be anything more. So if the council wants more than that, they would have to amend number seven on page one oh six to accommodate that additional. And I think it's certainly something the council should consider.
Where is he gonna, where does he say in the street?
Uh, this, this street was talked about at the last meeting as, uh, the neighbors did not want it, and so the council seemed agreeable to remove it. This one here. And the, and the councilman, Ashley, was saying, his understanding was that would be relocated here to provide the access to the cemetery. And that, I don't know if that was clear at the last meeting. I understood that.
That was discussed, but, but certainly not sixty feet.
Right.
Like that is, so maybe twenty feet to thirty, which would ultimately be a net gain of thirty feet.
Right.
Emory's afternoon, we, Jerry Ball, the surveyor, Jimmy Barber, um, the developer, his attorney, half the rest of the world, seem like me, um, sort of landed on an eighteen-foot strip, not knowing about the road and not caring. They preferred straight from the street.
Which street?
Straight from the road, straight from the road.
Okay.
To the cemetery, okay? And that might be modified later with the, uh, um, adjoining property owner, cause frankly, nine-fifths of that probably ought to be on the adjoining property owner, but we have no power to do it. Uh, the problem was, the problem was, he couldn't get the survey redone in that period of time, you know? I mean, this, they were still talking about this at five-twenty.
And, and to my knowledge, that was just gonna be an easement, no improvements.
That's right, just an easement. They may, if you want more, but that was just gonna be the minimum that the law required. Cause the state law requires very little, the, um, an access, but our, our UDO requires eighteen-foot strip, um, or appears to in its wording. Um, and, uh, that's what's an effort to provide that eighteen-foot strip. You know, there could be problems later with septic tanks, for instance, if, if they're underneath that, that easement. And, um, at that point, if so, they would have to follow the amended subdivision map with another access. But that was, it was my understanding that they wanted to do that. I suppose they would be here to speak for themselves. But that was my understanding about five-twenty with Mr. Ball. It was, that, this has been going on since, uh, the first call I got about it at one o'clock PM today. Last minute. And obviously, this is something that's been kicked down the road for twenty or thirty years or more.
There's one other issue I wanna point out on this. Since this is, um, since the planning board's recommendation to provide a, an emergency access, most likely in this location, um, the fire marshal pointed out that fire code actually requires that access, especially if there's no lateral access, if there's no lateral access to another future route, to a main street, then a secondary access is required. And, uh, the DOT will not allow full access, but if it's an emergency access, DOT's okay with it. So it is required by fire code. So it's not just a planning board recommendation, but it's also required by fire code. And that's one of the conditions of approval.
I will bring this up again, since, uh, uh, the, on your, on page one oh three, uh, the last sentence of the first paragraph under annexation says, "The town has the ability to restrict access to the town utility to only developments that request annexation. However, in this case, if the town refuses to provide water service, the county would be willing and able to provide the service." And I'm, I'm glad that our county commissioner's here today so that we can show that this is one of the problems that we have when the town tries to grow. If the county undercuts you and provides the information anyway, provides the services anyway, it makes it difficult for us to try to grow our town. Because the things that we offer no longer becomes a value because they can get it somewhere else. So, I, I would say that I would still like to see, if we approve this, that we approve it without providing the water and let the county provide the water. We got people in our town who, uh, are very concerned about us building a new water plant to provide future growth for our town, and then we give it away to people that don't wanna be part of our town. So I know we're selling it, but that's the same thing as giving it away. So my, my point is, I, I don't know what, I'm, I may be sitting around by myself, but, uh, uh, you know, I think if we approve it, I would wanna give them, I would let them go to the county and get the water. They're getting everything else from the county, so I don't know why we would put forth the effort to put it out there. And save our water for our people that want it as we grow our town, cause we know we're growing. Example, three hundred houses there, we got some other people interested in other properties around, you know? So, I, I, I think that, you know, we need to, uh... you know, so I, I, I think that, you know, we need to, uh, provide the stuff. And if I was talking with a neighboring town, and, uh, they were very interested and wondered why they couldn't buy water from us directly. So, I mean, the thing is, we sell, we have water, and where that makes us unique from the rest of the town, county, that we actually have our own water. So, anyway, having said that, you know, that was the issue under annexation. If they don't be annexed, I just, I'm not in favor of giving our, you know, giving our riches to somebody else. If they don't want it, that's okay, we'll just go somewhere else. But that's my view. Again, I may be by myself, but.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Surveyor, maybe, to address your, your question that you had.
Absolutely, yeah.
The developer is here, is that correct?
Yes. This is the owner of the development, of the proposed development?
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Scott Lee.
Mr. Ashley had a couple of questions regarding the access to the cemetery.
The adjoining landowners did, did not want the stubout road. And I understand from your, I guess your engineer or surveyor who was here last month, of course indicated the only reason it was on the plat was because it was required. So that, if we do away with that, that gives-
The cemetery.
I say it gives you 60 more feet. And, and my question was, can't you set aside the 18-feet access to the cemetery directly off the subdivision road? I know you've got lots already platted. One of the questions I asked last time, I think, was, was they, have they really been surveyed, or is that sort of a computer rendering that could be changed easily?
Well, one of the concerns I had in the beginning is if all of these things were brought up in like a preliminary meeting, then we could plan for these things. But instead, the town requires you to pay an engineer and a surveyor to design this whole entire subdivision, then submit it, and then we're talking about going back and changing. And I understand what you're saying, but here was my concern. I never heard that you wanted a 20 or 30-foot easement through the neighborhood. I had said all along, I didn't know if I, I, I didn't feel like it'd be a big deal to do a walking easement. But when I found out yesterday that the town's UDO says 18 feet, well, I don't have it here in front of me, I can get it, but I would encourage y'all to read that. It says that you shall present a cemetery for minor subdivision approval. This cemetery's not part of my project. It also, the state rule says you have to provide access to a cemetery, you can't leave them landlocked. But that would be if this cemetery was right in the middle of this piece of property, but this cemetery splits two pieces of property. So even if you approve my subdivision as it is, this cemetery's not landlocked. But I'm not presenting this cemetery in this development at all. It's not part of my subdivision. So when I asked today, and asked several times, why am I having to provide access at all? I was told, well, we just need to clarify this now and straighten this out. So I said, okay. And, and I was told I gotta provide 18 feet because that's what your UDO says. However, I'm trying to picture in my mind, I've got access to a homeowner association and all the homeowners in the future. If one of you guys live in this neighborhood, and you happen to be the property owners who are paying into a homeowner association, if this land is still owned by the homeowner association, aren't they going to have to fund the money to maintain this land while someone else has free access to drive dump trucks up it, maintain it, go up there and clean up around the cemetery, and do whatever they want to? People who aren't paying into the homeowner association. How do you sell that to the homeowners in the neighborhood? They're paying 100, 150, $200 a year into a homeowner association, and their money's going to maintain the piece of property that somebody else is tearing up and not helping pay for. The second question I was asked, well, what about if you just took those two lots just there and let each one of them go to the middle of the easement and just those two owners own it? Well, you got the same problem. How do you sell that $60,000 lot, some of that $250,000, $280,000 house, knowing that somebody's got free access to drive up and down that easement and tear it up and walk away? And he's got to fix it back. So that's when it holds things that, you know, there's a way you can just restrict it to a walking easement. That's not what, it sounds like your UDO is saying. Your UDO says they have to have access to get up in there and maintain it and keep it up. And I can't speak well, but I think that's what they're wanting, is some sort of an easement to be able to get up in there and work on it. If they need to, if that means getting vehicles, they go up through there and rut it up and leave it where it's holding water and, and it's not maintained, who's going to maintain it? How do you sell that to these homeowners? It's their responsibility as the homeowner association to keep it up.
I understand. The, the 18-foot that has been mentioned along the rear of the property line, is, is that just going to be an easement that goes with those lots?
Yes, but what I think is if this is back on the very back of your property, back in the very back, and that's why we came back to this, uh, later today, is at least then if it's not maintained and it grows up, it's not right in your front yard. If it's going up a property line, it's going from your front yard all the way to your backyard. If it's back on the rear of this property and it's not maintained and it grows up or whatever comes up, at least it's not an easement in your front yard.
What is the, and I've not been out there, what is the ground cover out there right now on those, those lots near the cemetery? Is it wooded? Is it just brush, or?
The cemetery is in a sort of wooded area. Um, I mean, it's not thick, you can walk through there. I walked through there today and, and looked around.
But, but the access to it, if you walk along the 18-foot you're, you're proposing, is that wooded as well?
You'd like to walk through a wooded area. There's a wood line that grows right up the property line between this property and the neighboring property.
So my question is, speaking of what our UDO says, but, because I had in, in this situation, hand lock when that applies. Are we requiring the developer to do something that is really not required by our UDO?
Well, your, your purpose of your subdivision ordinance is, is to have a viable subdivision to protect everyone. If this, if, if there's no easement to this cemetery, anybody who builds in that subdivision that's near that cemetery has a risk of a lawsuit for access. Okay? And we were trying to eliminate that issue. Now, I don't know that we can eliminate that issue without a quiet title suit, as Emery can tell you, but we, we can make it unlikely. Because if there's clear access, it's unlikely anybody's going to file a quiet title suit to say where it should be because it's clear access. So we were trying to provide clear access somewhere. And in fact, I checked with one title company, um, investors, Emery, Drew Foley, and did not want to pass title to this unless the cemetery issue had access. So I didn't think we should have a subdivision that can't get title insurance from the major title company in the state. And it would be because there's a possible special proceeding that could be filed to determine access by, I don't know who, because we don't know everybody down there in those graves or their family.
Well, and, and Bob, part of my concern is, I don't know where, and the ladies were here last, at the last meeting who helped maintain that cemetery and I think put the fence up around the cemetery. Having an easement's one thing, but I suspect they're not going to walk from their home out to this area to, to walk along 18-foot easement. I mean, they're going to have, they're going to be there with a vehicle, they're going to have to park somewhere. And, and my thought was, if there's a subdivision going up there, they're likely going to go park on your subdivision road anyway and then walk around and walk up the easement. Because they can't park on 1010.
From what I understand, that's what had happened in the past. But somewhere, somebody stopped them from coming off 1010, I guess.
I will sort of look, I understand your, your concerns completely.
Well, dealing with a subdivision too, where there's no sewer, and so I'm having to deal with septic systems. And, you know, once I get past you guys, I still got to deal with Frank Fuddenza, and he's got to approve every one of these lots. You know, and that brought up the next question today. How could I come here and say, yes, I, no problem, I'll give 18 feet, and now I just lost three lots worth $60,000 apiece? Because Frank says, man, you just messed up and we don't, you know. So you get into all those kinds of problems. You know, I asked today in one of my questions, does it need to be 18 feet? Is 18 feet necessary? You know, it's already kind of questioning whether, I mean, I understand you want to not leave this landlocked, but like I said, it's not landlocked because it's actually sitting between two pieces of property. It's not being submitted by us for approval as this neighborhood. I'm not buying this cemetery, it's not part of this neighborhood.
No, there's, there's a cemetery right in the Broadmore subdivision. Of course, that's in the middle of property. It's not what you're doing.
Yeah, that's right.
And I understand nobody, you know, nobody really wants to give access to it, but who built the subdivision? I mean, who built the cemetery? Where did it come from?
One of the, one of the problems here is, is, and I, I hadn't been out there, I don't know. It, it, it may not be possible to drive along that 18-foot path without spending money developing the road there. You, I'm sure you know, Scott.
Yeah, it's, it's through the wooded, that wooded strip.
So you'd have to cut down trees, and that could be quite some expense. The state statutes, since they're, since they're there, state law doesn't provide, uh, you know, maintain right-of-road. You just have to be able to get there somehow. Is our UDO that's provided? Why the UDO is 18 feet or not? Probably didn't think of this situation right here. You know, that's just no, normal to planning. Could they probably have a narrower area? Yes, but the UDO says 18 feet. And frankly, if somebody, I don't know who, but if somebody were to develop that to a path back there, which you could, if you want to require that, but I mean, if, if somebody developed it, uh, to a, to a path that, that's vehicle accessible, and I don't know that they need vehicles back there, I mean, they, um, some of these, I'm preaching to acquire, because you know all this, Emery, but some of these armed graveyards have walking access. But in any case, the, our UDO says 18 feet. I have some concern about there being trees there, but I don't know that that is Scott's problem. Y'all can decide that. And, um, the, uh, the location he preferred now was along that back strip for the reasons he said. The, uh, two surveyors prefer it that way, most, both Jimmy Barber and Jerry Ball, both of whom have been in there this afternoon. So it's, it's what the board's pleasure is, uh, on, on this. It, it has been debated back and forth extensively. And I understand Scott's frustration, the cemetery should be somebody else's problem, but he has come before us with an application for a subdivision. We are possibly limiting access to that subdivision. We, we need to, I mean, to that cemetery, we need to protect the cemetery, at least to the extent of some access.
I'm certainly not the developer, nor would I pretend to be. I, I, just me looking at it from the practical, the practical from the layperson, if you will. If I wanted access to that cemetery and I have loved ones or ancestors buried there, are you really going to be happy if I go out there at my own expense and start cutting trees on the back of Lot 7, 8, 9, and 13? Are those homeowners going to be happy with that? I was just thinking it was probably easier to, but I understand what you said, to just have a straight access. Anyway, that was sort of my thought process, but I didn't, well, I wasn't factoring in what you brought up about HOA maintenance.
I don't think they got a right to bring, put dump trucks down there anyway. Now, that doesn't mean they won't. You know, a right to do it, if the dump truck goes down there, it could tear up your street. But I don't think they have that right, just because they have a cemetery.
Well, like I said, the, the state ordinance, if I read it, and I didn't read, but it, it says that you have to provide them access. I believe it, it didn't say, and I did call the North Carolina State Cemetery Association today, and they referred me to, uh, the state statute that, but the state statute just says you can't deny them access across your property to it. You own the property, but, but you can't deny them access to go across it. But it talked about, for the purpose of going in there and cleaning up and doing maintenance and that type of thing. Well, like you said, it is very vague. If you're going in there and doing maintenance and do cleaning up, then you might need to get a truck in there and that type of thing. Where do you draw the line?
But it, it's, it contemplates-
Those type of things create ruts and, and things, and now you're going to tell the homeowners in this neighborhood, their association has to maintain and keep it up. I don't think anybody would want that in their neighborhood and their money going to keep it up or somebody else to rut it up and tear it up. That's just my opinion. And I'm the one who's got to explain it to the homeowners later and try to sell it.
I was very impressed with the ladies here last meeting, and, you know, I, I think it's kind of unusual to see the care and concern that they have had to look after that cemetery. I mean, they put up a fence around it, their own. The pictures look like a pretty good fence to me, too.
Any other questions?
Last session, the, I don't know, property owners that expressed concern about access to that, asking that question, developers, possibly a fence.
No.
Any other questions? Pleasure at the council.
Can we add a recommendation to, uh, not provide water? Let them go through the county? As part of our option on the annexation statement, that we have that option. And it was not really going to affect them because they can go through the county and get the water.
Mr. Mayor, with the-
Should I address the council about this property? Good evening, I'm Denise Pilkington, with Colwell Baker Advantage, and I have this property under contract with the developer. He has not actually purchased the property. The property still belongs to the Assemblies of God and Mr. and Ms. Augburn, who are present. I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak and for letting Scott speak tonight. This has been a, we have been through a lot of discussions with a lot of people, and I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on some of these issues, which I'm sure Mr. Spence has advised you on. And I know that you have a lot of rules and regulations that you have to follow, and I appreciate how difficult it is. The tract that you're looking at there, the Assemblies of God tract is in the Smithfield ETJ. The Avera property is in the county, so it's right on the line. Um, I believe the young lady you were talking about, Mr. Ashley, is here in the courtroom? I'm in the courtroom, wherever we are. The council meeting. So, um, I, I did want to recognize her because she did do a very good job. So in 2010, if you'll see on the survey, Inez Tuck had a survey done by Jimmy Barber, and it showed the easement from Cleveland Road or 1010 Road all the way to the cemetery and actually had that drawn off. So if you note that, you see the easement, it was actually a 30-foot easement that they had agreed to. Mr. Augburn and the Assemblies of God had agreed to give the heirs, and if you look at the cemetery, part of that property is owned, the Assemblies of God, the other portion is owned the Avera property. The cemetery is known as the Grand Avery (Avera) Family Cemetery. So Ms. Tuck, I believe she lives in New York or up north, she had this done for her family because they wanted to maintain the cemetery. So when they, when Ms. Tuck met with Mr. Augburn, he gave them permission for, to have his part surveyed, and I- part surveyed, and I would assume, but I don't know for sure, that they also talked with the Averas, but I don't know that. But it would be reasonable since part of the cemetery does fall on the Avera property, and the deceased people in the cemetery actually worked for the Averas in the eighteen hundreds. So in 2010, she hired the surveyor to survey the property, and Mr. Augburn and the Assemblies of God were willing at that time to deed the cemetery to the heirs and give them easement over the property. So the Grand Avery Avera Family Cemetery, they had it restored in 2010 and dedicated in August 10th, 2013. So if you'll see the second page on the one that's stapled, that's the dedication plaque on there that they erected on the property, and they have maintained it. It has not been neglected and it's not been abandoned, so it is a cemetery. As we talked to Bob Spence today, he did inform us that the state law supers, the town law supersedes the state law and requires eighteen feet easement to the property. And I've spoken with the Assemblies of God today and the Augburns, and they have suggested and agreed to giving a deed to their portion that's on their property to the heirs of the cemetery, and also a nine-foot easement on their property. And the Assemblies of God and the Augburns also feel that it's a reasonable request to ask for the adjoining neighbors, the Avera family, to provide the nine-foot easement on their property adjacent to the nine foot, the Augburns, nine feet that the Augburns are going to give, and that would combine to give them the eighteen-foot total that's required. That way, it wouldn't burden either property at that point. And also, you know, since the deceased worked for the Avera family, we would think that the Averas would think this is a reasonable compromise, and that's what we're proposing. And we would ask the town attorney if he would like to address any, or offer any suggestions to the compromise.
Well, it's, I, I can understand what Denise is saying, that it would be better if it was along the property line and nine feet on each side, much like Jimmy Barber proposed ten years ago, whatever the date of that survey is. The only problem is, we have no power to require the adjoining property owners to do that. If they want to get together and do that, that obviously would make this easier and probably would make Scott happy. Certainly, and it would probably help him with septic tank issues, if there are issues on the back of those three or four lots there. But this is something that y'all have to work out. The town has no, no authority there. The town has authority here because it's subdivision application in front of it. But we have authority over his land. As I said, anybody could file a special proceeding and let the clerk or the Superior Court determine how that road would go. It might go right down Jimmy Barber's path, but we don't have that authority.
If the Averas will not agree to the nine feet, which we think is very reasonable and would be the neighborly thing to do, then the Assemblies of God and the Augburns will do the full eighteen feet. Thank you.
Oh, the Averas going to speak? Somebody going to speak for them? So this, this, as I, I discussed with Mr. Ball, who called me about after 5:30 this afternoon, it seems to me the town board needs to approve this with the eighteen-foot easement, and if Scott can work out, or Denise can work out, or anybody else can work out this situation so that it could be moved, you know, we just file an amended subdivision plat. Fair enough, Steve?
Well, actually, the condition says the applicant shall provide a legal access to the cemetery. So at that point, it kind of leaves it up to them to figure it out, work it into the plat. It doesn't specify where, or it just has to be legal, which means eighteen feet to meet our UDO and to meet statute.
All right.
This is all very good discussion, and I appreciate it. And one of the reasons we tabled this was to hopefully foster some communication. I look at the cemetery, and if you do the numbers, eighty-six percent of the cemetery, eighty-six percent of the cemetery is on Assemblies of God land, which means a little less than fourteen percent is on the Avera land, so I do agree that the eighteen-foot offer is reasonable.
Right?
May I ask one question? Is the young lady here with the cemetery? Are you okay with that? I think we've got to make a decision tonight. I just want to make sure that, are you satisfied with the, with access off Cleveland School Road? Mm-hmm, yeah. How do you get there now?
We hit that off the Cleveland School Road. When legal road is down, we go in the same.
Right.
So they go in through there.
This is the access right here currently, comes in, turns, it goes down. See that?
There's a farm path that goes into the property and goes by that cemetery and all the way to the very back of the property. It doesn't stop at the cemetery. It's just a farm path that the farmers has been using, and that's the way they've been using that farm. And it goes all the way to the back of that property.
Who closed the access off 1010? Did somebody close the access off 1010 Highway?
How long ago was that?
I do have one quick question, and I was talking while Mayor Tim Scott asked this, I apologize. There was a topic about the buffer last meeting, and there was talk about we can definitely work with and get something figured out where amenable to that alternative. What was the response like to that, along the property line of buffer?
Well, the buffer that you're talking about is where the easement is now.
But the property line's a lot longer than that, I mean.
It's its whole.
That's, that's not it, I was talking about a buffer along the back of all the houses down the property.
There come up trees and everything else.
I was, I was told that the UDO does not require any kind of a setback or a buffer requirement.
Okay, but I, I know, and you weren't here that night.
So, so I guess we never agreed to any kind of a buffer.
Right, your representative said that you'd be willing to discuss it, I guess, and obviously, some breakdown happened, but I was just wondering if any discussion had happened about a buffer leaving the trees back there along the entire property line?
Well, the only other, I mean, yeah, there was a lot of things asked for, but, you know, there again, I'm trying to develop a subdivision on septic systems. I don't know how I can promise I'm going to leave trees that may or may not have to come out for septic systems as well. I mean, there's no water and sewer here being provided.
Well, providing, well, you'll get, either way, you'll get water. And having water helps you locate the septic systems, because you don't have to worry about proximity to a well. So I do have one call up. So Denise, the, the access off 1010 was used up until three years ago. People utilized, got access to the cemetery straight down off 1010, and the re-
Is that where it got closed off?
I guess, that's my quick, access was fine off 1010 until it got closed.
I don't believe, Mayor and Council, I don't believe it was along the shared property line, is that correct? It wasn't, it wasn't here in the past, it was probably straight up from here, is that correct? Where the access used to be. It wasn't along this shared property line where all the trees are. It's probably over here.
Yeah, about the middle.
So we're not talking about the same location the developers proposing at this time?
The easement ten years ago on that property, and she hired, paid him to put it there. I would assume though, when she hired Jimmy Barber and had to put it there, I would assume she was satisfied with it going there. She's going to pay, paid him to survey and put it there.
Probably is. Wouldn't talk. Okay, gentlemen, thoughts? At this time, though, the developer is still asking for water for the town or not?
I'm filing with water from the county. I was told again that I had to get it from the county.
You don't have to get it from the county.
They have to.
We have first right of refusal, but if you're not asking for annexation. Water that we could use for, all right. Gentlemen, thoughts? I have, Assemblies of God has agreed to the eighteen-foot. Is there a representative here? I guess it doesn't really matter with the making of the condition. Right.
But we have a condition that says illegal access. If they propose it in that location, it's good for staff.
Okay. All right.
My, uh, my preference would be that access to that cemetery be off a subdivision road. That is my preference. I'm not so sure I have legal authority to force that issue, especially if they're willing to provide the eighteen-foot access easement, I think that's all we can require. But my, my preference would be that it be through the subdivision road. I think that helps everyone accessing it. We've already heard the problems, and I get all those, but that being said, I move that we approve the request with conditions. And we approve the request with conditions one through eight, with the exception that condition number seven provides that the applicant provide proof of eighteen-foot legal access to the cemetery. You want that?
Without town.
It doesn't require water in the, in the eight conditions. I thought he didn't care.
We care.
Okay, well, then, condition number nine, it'd be without town water. I hope that's the right decision.
I'll suck it through a month.
Make the motion.
I think we're adding them now without town water.
Yes, sir.
They're going to staff.
I was going to let staff address.
Eliminate the hook lights.
All right, so we have a motion table, we have a second.
I have a favor. The access to cemetery, and I'm looking to see if the county's going to make a, who addresses, if I have to, and I need to establish.
All right, gentlemen, let's move on to business item number two. Steven? Item two, sir.
Sir, I'll talk later. Sir, Mayor.
No problem.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council, so this is the Twin Creeks non-contiguous annexation request, petition. The Navajo investment is requesting non-contiguous annexation of thirty-two-point-seven-nine acres, and also asking for town sewer and water utilities. This was tabled at the last meeting so that staff could better determine the cost benefit of annexation and to better determine the degree of non-conformities that would come with you. Approval of the, the county preliminary plat, the portion in the county was planted already, so it has development rights. So the ordinance, an ordinance may be adopted immediately or within six months of the petition date. So I went through all this. This is, I got a little better map of the proposed development. This is the county side that's already been approved. You can see no sidewalks, lots that are smaller, and I've got, I've got the, let's see, average lot size is eighty-three-ten, whereas we require twenty thousand, wait, no, we require eight thousand square feet. Wait, let me, let me see what I got here. We require fifteen thousand square foot lots. Their smallest lot is seven thousand square foot. Town setbacks are thirty feet from the right of way, the county setbacks were twenty feet. Five-foot side, side of yard setbacks in the county, we require ten. As I said earlier, no sidewalks are proposed, we require sidewalks on one side of the street. They're proposing a rural road section which is compliant with town code, however, sidewalks on one side of the street are somewhat difficult to accommodate with a ditch section. So those are the non-conformities. So with, with utilities, with annexation, Smithfield will provide water, sewer utilities. I had a, looking for my slide. Okay, I don't have a slide for the costs in here for some reason. Must have sent Eric the wrong one. The costs are in the staff report. So the summary is that there won't be a significant difference in, or significant cost to service this development. Public works sanitation revenue will be about twenty-two thousand, assuming seventy new lots, and that is a conservative number. I think there, I think there'll be at least eighty-two lots. The first year cost will be eighteen thousand for new rollouts, which would be a positive revenue of four thousand roughly. After the first year, expenses will decrease to thirteen thousand and result in a positive revenue of nine thousand. For trash, tipping fees are roughly sixty-five hundred, additional fuel roughly sixty-five hundred, and seventy rollout containers roughly five thousand. For the police department, it will result in about three hundred gallons of additional fuel, that roughly a cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars plus wear and tear on patrol cars. This amount can be absorbed under the current budget. So with that, do you have any questions?
I do have a question about the water being provided. Ted, if I remember correctly, you'd said we would just have a meter that would read, and I guess that would be subtracted off what the county's being billed for from us, so we could easily track it. So there wouldn't be any infrastructure, anything to put in, except the meter.
The developer would be putting in a pump station as well.
Can you go back to your slide? The non- And your back.
This one or the, uh, the list?
Someone actually listed, I think you had a slide that listed non-conformity. The developer, present.
Questions for the developer?
Well, I got a question for Steven first, but, um, Steven, you got the town services. If they're annexed, they'll be paying town taxes. Did you calculate what anticipated tax revenue would be?
Um, Mike? Mike actually took, I assembled this, but Mike and staff, and the other staff members pulled the numbers together. He's working some numbers here now.
Well, it looks like it'll be 40 to 50,000 lots a year to me.
I got about 57,000, depending on the value of the home.
That, that's sort of a, I think, important piece we need to weigh too.
I share some of my concerns.
Steven, there are sidewalks on the ETJ side, right?
There will be when there's a plant, we'll require it.
Just not on the rural side. This is only half of it here. Side that's already been approved by the county.
So basically, we're, so basically, we're, um, so we're holding them accountable for the side that we control, but the county has already approved this other as it was.
That's correct. It has vested rights.
So this is, this is an, this is an opportunity for us to make an exception to the rule since we have a pre-approved something from the county that violates a lot of our stuff, but it meets the county's requirements of what they've been putting up all over the county.
Um, that is correct. I mean, the town can decide whether we will accept non-conforming lots with annexation or deny the annexation because we don't think it's appropriate to have non-conforming lots be brought into the town. So that is really the crux of the decision before the council is, are you willing to annex this property with non-conformities?
Yeah, but I, my, my concern is, I think it's kind of un, in a way, it'd be very difficult and unfair to ask the developer who's already spent time and money and effort to develop the plans for that site and be approved by the county, and then because the county denies them the other part of their thing to be annexed, I mean, to be, uh, to provide services that they had to come to us, and so therefore he decides to come with all of it to us, it's kind of unfair for us to turn around and ask more of him than he already had done. I mean, I think we put him in double jeopardy in a way.
Um, he came to us because we have first right of refusal on utilities and-
For that one section.
For the whole thing. Well, for, for the one section, yes. But the county said, if you're going to serve your section, we don't want any of it. You take all of it. And that sent him to the town to annex the whole thing. If we don't annex it, or we choose, you know, we don't annex it, they're going to go to the county for water and sewer, and the county will provide it. So it's an opportunity for us to annex both sides. They'll get, we'll get what we want on the town side. We have to accept what's proposed here on the county side, and that really comes down to whether we're willing to accept that, um, and provide utilities.
Every time you annex a subdivision, you annex non-conformities easily.
Yeah, if it's outside the town, yeah, of course.
But every time you do it, you do.
Usually you'll annex-
Exactly right.
You often annex raw land and then build it out in town, but this is different.
We do it with-
This is not built, but there's development rights.
On the other side of that coin, though, we could, is a condition of annexing all of it. We could require the non-conforming part to become conforming, couldn't we? But Mr. Barber believes that not to be fair.
I, I believe it would be very difficult, very much, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that the, now the landowner, the developers here, you spent the money on developing all this information.
Just 4:30. I'm the engineer.
Okay.
Can't walk through this plan. I hear you're good.
Sir, sir, if you don't mind, if you'll come to the front.
I'm using loud enough to be heard.
We're recording, though, so it has to be on.
Yeah, if you'll state your name and affirm your real email.
Good evening. My name is Mike Stewart. I'm with Stewart and Proctor Engineering and Surveying. Um, I would like to note that this may not be as non-conforming as up, as you might think, because there, in this area that's in the county, there is 28% of that land is open space, which would have qualified it to be, uh, as an open space development in the town, and then all of the lots would actually be conforming. The, the non-conforming parts would be the sidewalk and would be the link to the cul-de-sac.
And setbacks.
And, and the setbacks. But I think in the towns, the setbacks aren't the same as the regular.
Not a PUD. It's not a PUD, so setbacks would apply.
So as far as the, the lot sizes themselves, the width of the lots against the streets and stuff like that, that, this really wouldn't be a non-conforming. And we would actually try to match the lot widths against the roadway in the section that is in the town. We did, in fact, turn the whole thing back into the county when we discovered that, that the town had taken into the ETJ this portion on the, on the east side of the creek. That being said, when we went to, uh, the county, they had informed us that they could only approve one side of it, and, and the utilities were going to be something that they would provide if the town chose not to act on their first right. But, you know, I agree with the, with the assessment that whoever gets it should get all of it, because we'll be building a lift station that is going to open up the adjacent property to want to be developed, and the utilities will be in place because we will have put them there. That being said, um, it, it, it's up to you guys if you want it or not, but it's, um, it, it appeared to be something that the town staff wanted, but it's, obviously, it's up to you guys.
But, so do we have actually a list of the real, of the final real non-conformities versus the non-formities that we thought we had, but we actually don't have? So we know exactly what we really have as non-conforming?
Councilman, um, I didn't have an application with this. This just showed up. I didn't consider it as a cluster. Whether it complies with their cluster ordinance, I've not analyzed, analyzed, analyzed it for that. It may be conforming, it may not be less non-conforming than I, I mentioned, because cluster ordinances do allow you to reduce lot size in exchange for open space, but there's a calculation there. Your open space has to be proportional to the amount of lot size reduced. And you may know whether it would-
It was 15%.
Okay.
Yeah, it was either 15% or the amount of reduction of the lots to the 15,000.
So lot widths may not, lot widths and size may not be non-conforming.
But it is, in fact, what you're looking at. Yeah.
What's the odds of, uh, putting sidewalks or trails somewhere in there that we can be conforming?
Um, I could see us getting a, a trail between the two cul-de-sacs that would follow the gravity sewer line, the outfall for the gravity sewer line, and that would put a connection between the two halves. Um, as it's been said, it is, it's difficult to determine where to put a sidewalk on a ditch section street.
I live in West Smithville, man. I know. I feel you.
Do you put it up on the lot above the cut section, and then you still have a ditch to cross to get to the road? Do you put it beside the road and it's in the travelway?
Let me say, in West Smithville, we don't, only side, only road we want sidewalks on Wilson Mills. We don't want it anywhere else, because it doesn't make sense. But anyway.
But I could see a trail connecting. Again, it's, it's going to be a challenge to determine where, in fact, a, um, a sidewalk would be. We would, you know, we would probably prefer to not have a sidewalk and put a trail on the outside of the property that connect the two roads together. But that will be something I'm sure we'll discuss at the-
Well, clearly, we have a precedent already, so.
But it'd be something we'll discuss at the, you know, as we go through the preliminary process with staff, if in fact, you know, I think this is more about whether or not you guys want the area for utilities, because that's the reason we're asking for annexation. You know, you will have, you'll have the tax base, you'll have the utilities, and you'll control the development adjacent, because if the county goes with the pump station, it will be harder to have them develop without being in, in the county.
I know we're just talking annexation here, but we are looking at a plan. What's, what's proposed for these lots?
As far as homes, um, the builder that is looking at these lots from the developer is building currently right across the county line, um, off of South Creek Road and stuff, and, and off Mount Pleasant Road, and those houses have been in the 240 to 300 range.
Pick-built?
Pick-built, yes.
Okay.
It is attractive that there's a school beside it.
You need to grow that way, so I'm thinking.
Well, I think y'all want the sidewalks. Yeah, you go.
We need to see some trails. I'm going to leave with trails.
You all right with trails?
I'm the fourth.
You want trails?
We need a motion, Mayor. We do need a motion.
I mean, a motion that we approve the annexation. Property.
So this is not a public hearing? Yeah. This is just an item where we're picking up from last.
I've done to consider the trail.
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
With the trail that connects the two properties.
Yes. We, we, we will want to do that, to make it a contiguous neighborhood.
But y'all will be with Duke? You going to go with Duke Energy? Not us, because you said something about utilities would be with us, but now it says Duke Energy will be with us.
Let's do it.
What's that?
We, we don't have, we don't have electricity.
We don't have easements to go out here.
Oh, it's, it was there.
Saying utilities, I was just wondering.
Well, it's one key.
What's that?
Side of the motion. A second. Motion, a second. Take it down. May your question be Scott?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I didn't think we did, but he was kept saying, oh, you two invited us with all of us just for the sewer. I was just making clarification.
And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be beneficial running out of 100 houses anyway.
So also, gentlemen, so as part of this, I do need a motion to, um, actually adopt the order. An annexation. 497.
497.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
F.
Move. Because this is not trying to do it.
Uh, we'll move on to business item number three. Consideration of approval to accept the upset bid amount of $6,500 for the property located at 916 Third Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty straightforward. Um, during the August meeting and then during last meeting, we discussed, um, the upset bid process for 916 Third Avenue. Here in Smithfield, on page 159, 160, you have locations of that lot as presented last month. The council approved the starting bid of $6,500. We went through the process as per state code. We received no other bids, um, so the winning bid is, is left at $6,500. Decision of the council to either accept that bid or deny the bid, um, and maintain ownership of the lot.
How long is that?
Yeah, it's, it's open for 10 days. That's by the code. We can't leave it open any longer.
How is it advertised?
It was advertised in the news and observant.
What's the tax value?
About $10,200, a little more.
Left the bid open for 30 more days. I mean, I, that's just my-
We have, we would have to start the process again. We can only leave it open by state code for 10 days, and then it closes if we receive no other bids. So you'd have to reject the bid and start over again if you want to do that. And then leave it open for 10 more days.
Yep.
All in favor? I make a motion to reject it.
Well, the, the, the lots over there aren't selling for tax value. Not selling anywhere. Marlin, you think? It's a good price, what do you think?
Well, perhaps we could see another auction to sell. We could put it on good deals and sell it.
We, we could refuse the bid and then open up another process and have an auction for the lot if you want.
Can we, we maintain the property?
Yeah. It's our property.
I make a motion we accept the bid.
Second. We got two motions. Which one do you want to go? I'll second which one. Add that first motion. I have a second open.
I rescind it.
Okay. All right. So with the first motion, now I have a second motion. Move. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen, moving on to business item four. Bid award, uh, to John Deere Winterville dealership in the town, $44,000, $42,000. Purchase of a stick steered tractor to public utilities. Let's go.
Good evening, gentlemen. One moment, please. Some technical difficulties. I have no idea. No?
This is the low bid?
Yeah. It's on the tractor, so. Smithfield? Thank you.
Ted, if I could, if I could step in for this matter.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is only in front of the council because this is a non-budgeted, uh-
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is only in front of the council because this is a non-budgeted, uh, purchase. We have money left over in the capital line, uh, to purchase the tractor. It was an item that was, um, in the capital plan. So we're asking to move it ahead and purchase it with leftover revenues. It would not require a budget amendment, um, but would use monies that were left over from previous expenditures in that line, uh, that came in under budget. Tractor is needed to handle the grass between poles and things out in rural areas of our city. But normally, this item would fall on the consent agenda. However, because it is a non-budgeted expenditure, expenditure, I put it on the business items to bring it to your attention. It is a low bid.
And it's part of the capital.
It is part of the capital, and that's included in your package.
And it keeps us under the approved amount?
It does.
I move we approve the request.
I love you guys. I really love you guys. Thank you.
We're not gonna let you wear us now.
No, that's good. We're good. Thank you.
We don't hear August 12th.
This is the greatest council ever.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to business item number five, which was removed from the consent agenda. Item number two, special use of it. Councilor-
Do you have some questions on that?
I talked to the advocate. She wasn't able to be here tonight. Actually, um, just trying to find out, are they compliant with this application here? They, they kinda wanna do this, this, um, sorority, uh, Johnson County Sorority Group. And they kinda wanna do this every first Saturday in May, so, um, that, that was all the questions really that I had. I know we was, this is temporary use from then, but it's something they would want to do pretty much every year. Right.
In conjunction with the hand-
First week in May?
First week in May is the hand- Is that right?
It, it is. That's-
There any conflict? I mean, seven, 11 a.m.?
No, there is, there is another run that takes place during that time, um, usually Johnson Health. But usually, I believe it's, it, it'll fall on that area as well. That's why we wanted to try it one year to make sure we didn't have conflicts.
Well, I, I would suggest, so it's not gonna be a conflict this coming year?
We don't believe so.
Okay. I, I think we need to call Johnson Health and see if they can just choose, like, the second Saturday of May. And so everything's consistent, so this one can continue annually and that one too. I don't know if they have a schedule for Johnson Health.
This is the first year of this one?
Yeah, no, but, but they, I thought they anticipated it to be an annual thing. Yeah, and so Johnson Health, I just, we just need, yes. But I think it is varied. I think Johnson Health has, but it's, it's not gonna conflict this year. Make a motion you run it. It's okay with this as annual thing. It doesn't conflict. It doesn't conflict, is what we're saying. I move we approve the request as annual event until they tell us they don't want it annual.
Second, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, councilmember's comments.
I have one, the, uh, just to let you know that, you know, we have somebody in Smithfield who's running for, who is gonna be running the Boston Marathon. His name is Gary Snow. He works for the county sheriff department. He was, uh, it's, it's a big deal to get into the Boston Marathon. And he's in the process of, uh, you know, they have to raise certain amount of money for their charity that they're working with, and, and he listed as a charity, you can go to, you can go to Johnstonian News or to the, uh, Wilson News. Both of them publish the same article. So it's on the news and you can, uh, you can tell you how to, um, but you might see him running around town, because he does a lot of Facebook stuff. He's all over the town, because I see pictures of Smithfield all over the place. So as they track him and as they keep records of him, he's actually promoting the town of Smithfield, because you see him, and everybody, he's in a picture right here. I think there's, uh, one of those, uh, electric, the buildup tank thing there that we have across town. So, but, uh, anyway, he's named Gary Snow, and he's, uh, actually, I think his stuff is called the, uh, like, the snowman, running snowman. Yeah, that's what it is, so. Uh, but we appreciate, uh, having people in our community, uh, that stand out like that, so.
I'm, I'm just gonna make a comment. To me, and I suggested this years ago when I first got on the council. And I know there've been some meetings that I haven't been to, but some of these items that we discuss, our discussion is very important, but, but it seems to me that some of the items we discuss, we ought to know before we get here. And, and I'm just suggesting that perhaps there'd be a, maybe a voluntary meeting a week before the council meeting or something to maybe alleviate some of our discussion. I mean, discussions, nothing wrong with our discussions. Sometimes I feel like we're discussing things that we ought to already know. Maybe that's just my fault for not banging on department heads' doors, but, uh, we talked about workshop meetings periodically over the years. Maybe we, maybe we want to revisit that, and nobody likes more meetings than we need, but it seems like every now and then a meeting, extra meeting might help. That's not a motion, just a comment.
So the purpose would just be to work with staff and-
Work, communicate our needs to the liaison.
My problem is I work for the Department of Public Construction, so it becomes a conflict of interests related to the school board and legislatures, and they frown upon us being involved in events like that. So for that particular situation, I would have to, uh, decline.
You're willing to do it, Steve? I mean, we could just, I mean, you could just be our liaison, if that's okay with you.
Oh, sir.
All right, um, I think we do have, uh, what, tree lighting Thursday night and the Christmas parade on the 13th. I hope everybody can come out for that. Ride along in, I think we've, uh-
Decided the council's-
Like, still ride along in front of the parade, and then also, in the event, to jump on the float if you, you desire to do so. But the town does have a float, so make it through it and come back and jump on the float if you would like to do so.
Are we going to, uh, with the lighting, excuse me? I remember last year, I said to do the lighting, the tree and the Santa Claus, because everybody leaves and we light the tree, and I look at Andy, and me and him are the only two there. So Merry Christmas. So if we could do that earlier in the event, so it, it would be part of the celebration and everybody gets to see the tree lit, and maybe Santa Claus come a little early, see the children. That would make the- One out of two is not bad. Yeah, my son had to go get his flat pants today.
Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you, sir, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. Thank you for mentioning the, uh, tree lighting and the Christmas parade. Those are great key events. We'll also have town hall open again for the Christmas parade, so if the weather is cold, come in, grab a cup of coffee or hot chocolate and, uh, warm up these restaurants if we be. Wanted to, uh, bring, uh, community's attention to, uh, a Christmas party that is, um, scheduled at Seriard Community Center on December 7th from 5:00 to 8:00. Uh, that's something that was pre-registered. We have over 500 children pre-registered for that event on that night from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Uh, we partnered with Toys for Tots, uh, to provide a gift to each child. Uh, we'll have a lot of people coming and going throughout that event, and that should be, uh, great for anyone who wants to stop by and, and bring your Christmas beard up, because it'll definitely be there that night. I want to also congratulate Dale Hamm is here, um, in the back, the director of our Recreation Aquatic Center. Earlier this month, we, we held a gymnastics competition. We had people from, competitors from as far away as Charlotte, High Point, all over the state. Uh, had eight different sessions of competitions. We had about 250 people show up for each session, so that's a lot of people coming to, uh, our facilities, um, for a really great event, really great turnout. Wanted to congratulate him and thank him for his efforts. On, uh, January 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, it's the Fire Department. We also have our next public comprehensive plan meeting. I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention again. Uh, anyone who's able to attend that or has already attended those know it's important as part of our plan moving forward and for a lot of our zoning, um, and decisions that'll be made in the future. Uh, also want to make the announcement, uh, y'all have a, a second page, um, of my, actually, third page of my report, uh, announcing that hiring of Brian Eaves as marketing and communication specialist. This is a position that was approved in the budget, a new position that this town has not had before. Uh, Brian has 20 years of experience in all facets of media, including audio, video, radio, and social media. He'll promote all the great things that are occurring throughout Smithfield for both our citizens and our viewers, and our visitors, excuse me. Uh, we, uh, look forward to his presence on staff and encourage you, once he is here, um, after, uh, the 17th of December, full-time, to stop in, say hello to him, and, uh, discuss your opinions and your views on how we should better market our community. That is it.
So I just had, I had just a question on, I think, where the chambers is going to be for property tax appeals, January through March?
Yes. That, that's the normal process. I guess it's been done during the last, one which was eight years ago. Uh, they've asked to reuse that again. It shouldn't really conflict with any, any meetings that we have during that time. We're trying to reschedule either to the conference room or to the Fire Department training room.
This, we're all, all county appeals, not just-
That's right.
Are they leasing space, or we just?
We have just provided it in the past, so we didn't change. Yep.
That won't interfere with our January meeting then?
It, it's over at 5:00 o'clock.
January meeting is?
The eighth, week late.
Anything else, gentlemen? If not, uh, we need to close this session. Does the person that don't matter?
I make a motion we go into closed session, present pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a6.
Motion a second, all in favor?